You want to do.
Certainly, I'm going to start with the two people I can see first before I forget. Mr. Ferguson.
Present.
Ms. Langgallis.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Jordan Byron.
Present.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Muschak.
Here.
Mr. Patches.
Present.
And Mr. Showman.
Here.
Believe that's everybody.
Okay.
Miss Wells as well.
Galen. Galen is here. Okay, before we begin, I'm going to ask if you're not here representing or speaking on behalf of our first two public hearings. If you would simply stop your video until we get to your item. That makes it easier for us to follow the meeting. Thank you. All right, we have two public hearings. I'm not going to explain on the first, which is Wegmans, which is 2022-19 The process we use for public hearings. Because we've already closed that public hearing to comment for comment. Is there someone here representing Wegmans this evening? Okay, Attorney Klein?
Hey, evening everyone, Jay Klein from Carmody Law. Just here, it's my understanding that this is going to be continued to next Wednesday, August 24th, 2022, at 6:00 PM via Zoom, so we'll see you all then and there.
Okay, that's my understanding as well. So we have opened the public hearing, we're going to continue it to August 24th. And with that, we'll close the hearing and move on to the second item.
Thank you.
All right, see you next week. Okay, the second item is a true public hearing. It's 2022-36 SP. Watch Me Grow Daycare 60 East Avenue. Proposed Nursery School Childcare Daycare Center within an existing building at St. Paul's on the Green. The way we do these public hearings is the applicant will have an opportunity to go over the project during that conversation. The members of the commission are free to ask any questions they wish. When that presentation's been completed, we will open it up to the public for comment. We don't set time limit on how long members of the public can speak, but we do ask that you be as brief as possible while covering all of the items that are important to you. You only get one opportunity to speak, so please do make certain that you cover everything that you want to say because we will not be able to give you the second opportunity. Again, during the public comment period, it's essentially you're speaking to, though it's not a conversation with the applicant, not to us. We ask that you be polite and if your comments are the same as someone else who's spoken in the interest of time, we'd ask that you simply say that rather than going over all of the same details that someone who's spoken before you has. Again, during this period, commission members are free to ask questions. When all members of the public who wish to speak have had an opportunity to do so, we will close that portion of the public hearing. And the applicant will again have an opportunity to speak to address any issues that may have come up during the public comments period. Again, during that period, the commission members are free to ask any questions they have. When that is completed, we will close the public hearing and move to the action phase. May I ask who is representing the Child Daycare Center?
Good evening, my name is Michelle Waddell.
Okay, please go right ahead.
Yes, good evening to the board. Thank you so much for agreeing to meet with me and hear me this evening. My name is Michelle Waddell and I am looking and hoping to receive approval from the zoning board to have a daycare in Norwalk at 60 East Avenue at St. Paul's on the Green. They have a building there that in the past they've used for music classes for children and where they've also had classes of clay making and pottery for children. They have agreed to rent to me two classrooms that I might use. They would be small classrooms, which is what I prefer, small classrooms in which to care for the children. One room would be six children and one room would be eight children. Ages three months to five years old. And the hours would be 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The church has been so supportive. The board of trustees at the church as well as the diocese and has given approval and, you know, at least for me to make this dream come true there. Let's see, and that's, yes, if there were any questions, I wasn't sure if you wanted more information. We're nature-based, I could, you know, explain a little more what we do. We're a nature-based, outdoor-based program. And the grounds there are beautiful, you know, situated on three acres. So the children can learn a lot about the plants, the trees, the flowers, I, you know, just envision going through that courtyard. And we even have a playground there. The church has allowed us to put up a professionally installed playground, five-foot-high, four-and-a-half-foot-high fence. So it would just be wonderful for the children. I have 14 families already, ready to go, you know, every space can be full. You know, if I receive approval and the families are very excited. A lot of essential workers, teachers, healthcare providers. So it would be, you know, huge help to the families as well. And it's perfectly located right off of the, you know, 95, not too far from the Merritt. And their families, majority of the families are from Norwalk. I believe maybe only one or two families are from outside of Norwalk but work in Norwalk. So it would be a real help to the families.
Logistically, how does this work? Have you already received the necessary approvals from the state and the local health departments? Or is it something you do after the fact?
So I received fire marshal approval and I received the health department approval, but I would need zoning board approval in order to then go before the building department. And then, and then at that time I could go to the state. I cannot go to the state without all four approvals.
Questions from other members of the commission? Mike, go ahead.
Hi, we've never met, Michelle, but I am a member of the church. And I don't have to recuse myself because there's no financial involvement. It's not a business arrangement that I'm involved with. And it's, you know, totally separate with the church administration. But I know that building is underutilized and it would be great to hear some children's voices during the day because it's really quiet during the day. So I'm not going to, I don't have any, I don't have any questions. But I just want to wish you the best of luck.
Thank you so much. And again, so many parents are very excited. They know the church well. There are already some members who want to have their children come there as well. And we're just so excited, you know, so excited. They love the property. It's beautiful. And you will hear a lot of children's voices. You know, we have two sets of twins trying to come, you know, it's, yeah, it would be well utilized, well utilized.
Go ahead, Galen.
Well, I was just going to ask how many employees you have?
Yes, so I will have five. So I staff heavy. The ratio you normally need is one to four, but I do like to have extra floaters in case someone is out sick. Also to provide for breaks. And with little ones, I just feel, you know, the more eyes, the better. You know, they move quickly, so just to prevent any accidents, any problems, I like to have extra staff. So I prefer to staff one-to-three ratio instead of one-to-four.
So what are your hours of operation?
8:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So we'll. Okay, and do you operate on the public school schedule?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
I do have another question. So you mentioned that a private playground was erected just for your use? And it's secured by a fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is currently being installed. Actually, yes, yes.
And what other security measures are in place? Or do you have plans for as far as security cameras, locks and everything?
Yes. So the great thing is the doors lock and we're allowed to keep the doors locked. You know, obviously in light of what's been happening, you know, the horrific things that have happened in Sandy Hook and, you know, other schools. So they've said we can keep the doors locked. Parents have also asked that the door remain locked. We are having cameras in each room. We will have security camera in each room. We, the fence will be four-and-a-half feet high and we'll have a gate that closes and there will always be at least two staff outside with the children. The children will go out in shifts, so we'll still keep that two-to-four ratio, like one-to-four, but we'll have two people, never more than eight children, but sometimes as little as four children, depending on the age and when they go out. So we'll keep the same ratio outside. So we think with the front door locked, we think with the cameras in the room at all times running on and the secure playground area that will make parents who feel comfortable will provide good security.
And one last question, are all members of your staff, are they CPR medically trained?
Yes, so all the staff are CPR-trained, first aid, administration, and medication-trained. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Anything else before we open it up to the public? All right, if not, Michelle, are you going to explain how the public can access the public hearing?
Sure. So if it looks like one person's on, but if you'd like to participate in this public hearing, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom of your screen and then we'll bring you over to speak. If you're dialed in on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
All quiet.
See no hands.
Okay. There's no one from the public that wishes to speak. Give you one more opportunity before we turn it back. All right. Any final comments?
No comment really, but really comment on the, on the most have your staff like that, the one-to-three ratio, I think is amazing. I know that sometimes it's one-to-five, one-to-six. And have one-to-three, we have two kids and we, sometimes you run out of eyes. So that's really, really, really good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any final comments, Ms. Waddell?
Just thank you so much. I appreciate this great opportunity. You know, we see just such a need for childcare and I'm just trying to provide, you know, excellent childcare to and service families. A safe environment for the children, a fun environment. And this location, it would just be beautiful. I know the children would love it. The parents would be so happy to have the children there and would feel comfortable there. And it would also provide families who are looking even for a church home to have the opportunity because the church is there. Yeah, so just a great way for me to serve, you know, the families but also the community. So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and move on to the action. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make it.
Mike's making the motion. Hector, your second.
I second the call.
Okay. Steve, can you pull up? The, or Michelle, pull it up. Thank you. Okay. You want to keep going?
Yeah, I just want to make sure who's seated and who's not seated.
Oh, I apologize.
So I think you have all three alternates present, so you need to seat two.
Right. All right, why don't we seat the first two that arrived for this one? That would be Hector and JJ. And if there's another action item, we'll have one of them go off and Steve will be seated.
Darius.
I'm sorry, Darius. I apologize, Steve. And Darius will be seated. Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a proper second. Let's, let's do a roll call on this.
Do you want me to stop sharing or leave the, leave that up?
Yeah, I, I think I have a hard copy, but I assume everybody's had an opportunity to read it.
Okay, Ms. Jordan Byron?
Approved.
Ms. Langgallis?
Approved.
Ms. Wells?
Approved.
Mr. Cantor? Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Absolutely.
Mr. Patches? And Mr. Showman?
Yes.
That's unanimous.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Best of luck with it.
Thank you so much. Oh, should I stay on, sir?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you so much. All of you have a wonderful rest of the week and thank you so much. We all thank you. Thank you.
Nick, I'm sorry I missed you because your video was on.
Oh, that's okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed, I missed Mr. Rowena. I apologize. I did, his video was off.
I just got here. I didn't realize my invitation came yesterday.
Let's get on the record that Commissioner Rowena is with us also. Okay, that's it for the public hearings. Next item, 2022-40, Special Appropriation Norwalk Police Department Purchase of Vehicles. I see Chief Qualick is here.
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to explain the $200,000 transfer you're looking to make?
Yeah, so just to give you a little brief history. Two years ago, well, actually before that, we developed a replacement plan for our vehicles at the request of the finance department. And it was working well, but then two years ago, the three administrative vehicles were cut from the capital budget due to other pressing needs. And we didn't want to cut the patrol fleet, so we cut the admin vehicles. We put them back in the budget for this year. And again, because of other pressing needs, the three admin vehicles were cut. And we were able to purchase our patrol vehicles. About five years ago, we put in a budget for replacement of our entire radio system. The estimate at the time from our vendor was about $15 million. We've started to get that process on the completion end and it's going to come in way under budget. We decided to go with the state backbone. It's a long story and I don't want to bore everybody, but because we're going with the state backbone and we don't need as much infrastructure as we thought, will be millions of dollars under what we originally had budgeted for this project. We went to the city and requested that 200,000 of that money that is left be reallocated to fund the three vehicles that for two years have been cut. Those vehicles now have about 80,000 miles on them and by the time, if we don't get them this year, those will have 100,000 and we won't be able to trade them down. We usually trade down our admin vehicles as they go because we don't get many of them just because of financial constraints. We've got approvals from everyone within city government to do that. And then because it's a capital budget item, we've had to go through, I believe, six different committees at this point. But, and your committee was something we weren't planning on. At the last minute, they said we had to come to your committee as well. So that's why we're here to request the approval to transfer 200,000 of that radio. I won't say overage, it's money that we won't need to spend for the radio system to purchase vehicles that for two years have been cut from our capital budget.
Yeah, Chief, it seems to me that this, this makes perfectly good sense. The only question I have is, is sort of tangentially related. And that is, is the department in the process of developing a plan for the use of those unused funds? For the balance of the funds that won't be necessary for the radio system?
Actually not. Actually, the plan is barring any unforeseen circumstance would be, would be returned to the city.
Oh, I see.
We're not looking to, you know, encumber those funds for something else that, just because the money's there, there's, you know, that's not our plan.
What sort of vehicles are these?
I'm sorry?
What sort of vehicles are these?
They're admin vehicles similar to the patrol fleet, but not frontline patrol cars. They're admin versions of the Ford Explorer.
Are they electric?
No, they're not electric. There are no electric Ford Explorers. Actually, the only Ford that's electric is the Mustang Mach-E. And we've looked at that and right now they're not available and they've been recalled as far from what I was told, but we are looking at electric vehicles for some of the admin vehicles down the road. We've attended several meetings. We had a meeting with Live Green, Connecticut about two weeks ago to look at what our infrastructure would need to be to support doing that. And actually Ford has a group. I forget the name of their, it's called the, I don't want anyone to guess, but there's a group, there's a group at Ford that will come out, look at your infrastructure, look at the electric service to the building to see if you can support, you know, X number of vehicles and, you know, what kind of upgrades you would need in the cost and that kind of thing.
Yeah, I know Westport's making that transition.
Westport has bought a couple Teslas. But they're using them for specialty vehicles that are not on the road 24/7. Our original plan was to buy some patrol vehicles, but that's not something that even Ford recommended right now because they just don't have the infrastructure to do that. To run something 24/7 to be able to charge it, it runs, ruins the battery. There's other things that go on. But we are, we're actively looking at that to try to incorporate some electric. Our patrol fleet is hybrid, the new vehicles that we've purchased and the vehicles we've budgeted for next year are hybrid vehicles as well.
Nick, I would, I would, I would suggest frankly that, I mean, it's fine to discuss with department heads the need for them to consider EV, but frankly, this is a conversation that the city ought to be having among all the department heads so that the city can develop a plan for the use of these alternate fuel vehicles throughout its departments. Obviously, different departments have different needs. But rather than doing a plan by each individual department, would seem to me it makes much more sense for the city to do a citywide plan. Galen?
Why are you only considering Ford?
Well, for a couple of reasons. We've had a good experience with those vehicles. The, our service garage fleet for the city is comfortable dealing with the repairs on those vehicles. And we have a dealer in Bridgeport Park City Ford who does all the warranty repairs on the vehicles for us and they put the Ford's police vehicles at the front of the line for repairs. They're also on the state contract bid, so the price of those vehicles is much lower than the civilian cost would be for those vehicles. It's a very common police used vehicle.
Any other questions for the chief? If not, can I have a motion to approve this transfer?
Make the motion.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Steve Ferguson.
Oh, okay, Steve made the motion.
I'll second Tammy.
Okay, and Tammy seconds.
And to confirm, I am seated. This is Darius.
Oh, yes, Darius, I apologize. Darius is seated and for this one, JJ comes off.
Comes off? Okay, thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena? I think it was, yes, Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Wells? Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
I'm staying.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Mr. Patches?
Yes.
I think that's it besides the chairman.
Yes.
I think that was everybody.
Okay. Unanimous with one abstention.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Keep us safe, chief.
Have a good one.
Okay, next. 2022-32 CAM Norwalk Transit District, 11,700 square foot rear addition. Is there someone here representing the district?
Yes. How are you?
Okay.
Mike Petron, yes, Mike Petron and Dennis Reel are here representing. Dennis has much more history in those, the internal operations that's going on out here in some of the internal, let's say modifications to the building, so I'll let him kind of talk about the grand project. The site work itself is kind of small, so Dennis, do you want to take it away?
Sure, thank you for having us. Would it be okay for me to share my screen?
Sure.
Yes, great, thank you. So just very briefly, the site as it currently exists from south to north on Wilson Avenue, we have the visitor and staff parking, the administration and maintenance building separated, excuse me, from the bus storage and service lane building by a courtyard and also a pedestrian connector that connects the two buildings. We also have a fueling island to the north. And bus traffic from Wilson actually follows the sketch on the right. Coming in from the north driveway down this basically accessory driveway, turning into the courtyard, parking in the barn. And then in the morning they come out onto Wilson Avenue again. As part of the major renovation project, Norwalk Transit requested that we put an addition on the building which would basically provide them with a cover for some of the operations that they have within the courtyard itself. The site is bordered on three sides by a rock outcropping. And as you can imagine during And as you can imagine during a snowstorm or inclement weather. It's very hard to maneuver. Around the side itself, so. The addition, which is about eleven thousand eight hundred square feet. Would basically provide them with. Shelter to move the buses around between the maintenance area and the parking area for the buses. The rest of the project happens all inside. The renovation encompasses. A complete redo of the mechanical systems, plumbing systems, fire protection. A new roof. And some modifications to the building layout. Interior. That's kind of it for the overview.
Okay. I'm not certain I understand. How that new covered space is going to be used.
It's basically just circulation between the. Bus maintenance building. Let me share again.
I understand, I I I I understand how the building works. Is there something new that's going to be happening? Under this now enclosed space? That isn't currently happening under the open space?
No, not at all. We're not adding staff or vehicles as part of this project. Strictly, for lack of a better word, for convenience.
This being funded by the FTA and Condon?
That's correct.
Commissioners have other questions?
I will also add that they're going to be doing some milling and overlaying the pavement out here, and we do have some stormwater improvements associated with that.
Well, I assume that new roof is going to need its own. System to get water off.
Yes, correct. Absolutely. Yep, that'll be tied in separately and. We are adding some stormwater quality units onsite prior to that courtyard and some of the circulation areas discharging off site. Currently it doesn't have any.
Will the roof of the courtyard be visible from Wilson Avenue?
Very slightly, if you're familiar with the property, the pedestrian connector. Hides most of the addition. It might stick out a couple or three feet above that elevation. But the. Two other buildings would basically dwarf that addition.
Okay, I mean, I would hate to see. It's a reasonably attractive building. I would hate to see. Anything that detracts. From the look of that building.
No, if if anything from Wilson Avenue will be complimented by what we do.
Didn't, excuse me, didn't it win an award at the time when it was, when it opened? I think it was an AIA award.
It might have very well been, I mean, it's. It was built in two thousand, so it's. It's a beauty, but unfortunately, the. The heart and lungs are kind of failing. The building gets used enough a lot, as you can imagine, for the. Facility and the services that it's providing. And the gist of the major renovation building. Is basically to completely redo the utility. Services and basically the systems within.
Mike, it never had a HVAC system that worked the way it should have. It was not properly designed. And so it's a good thing that. Though those systems are being overhauled.
Well, I guess that proves that a building can be attractive and not functional.
Yes.
They're both important.
I'm sorry, Tammy, question?
Yes, thank you. You just answered one of my questions. It was built in two thousand. I was trying to remember. I do remember the construction of it. And was this addition that you're looking to do now considered in the original design of the building?
No, it was not.
Okay.
I built it, so I can tell you that.
Oh, okay, Lou. And so this is just for convenience, but really is going to make the functioning of it better and then you're kind of improving the guts of the building, in other words.
It's it's definitely going to improve operations. Right now, as the buses come back, if they have to go to maintenance. It's really not a problem, but when they jockey them around between maintenance. And the bus barn. And in Clement weather particularly, it becomes a little bit of an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mostly because the snow can be stored anywhere on site.
Any other questions?
Again.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, before you close in 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 the form of vote. We did get a copy of the of the draft. Approval letter. Did note that there was a bond requirement in there. And Dennis, do you want to speak to the difficulties about Norwalk Transit actually putting up a bond? And I didn't know if there was some other mechanism. Whether it be a MOU, a memorandum of understanding, or some such thing that we could replace that with. So Dennis?
Sure, because the project is being funded by the FTA. And Connecticut DOT. Neither of those agencies have a mechanism for bonding projects. So the bond would have to come from the city to the city. Which seems. A little bit awkward. We were hoping, as Mike said, that a memorandum of understanding. Would suffice. There will be a future project. Happening relatively soon. Hopefully. That would allow some of the buses to be electrified. And that will require for the utility company to basically do additional work. On the north and around the north driveway. Between the two poles are there right now. Which would. Basically require them to redo. That apron the way that the. Engineering department would like us to do. So that's kind of a given that that work will happen. The bond, however, is a little bit of an administrative difficulty.
Steve, can you address that?
Yeah, I, Michelle and I chatted about it. I I think we could probably waive the bond requirement. I'm not. Too concerned with the potential impacts was related to that.
Thank you. I just didn't want it to become a sticking point later on, that's all.
Steve, would you prefer to have an MOU or simply drop the issue completely?
You know, either way, if you're comfortable with that or a letter in the file, some, you know, if. If that gives you a little more comfort level, I'm not too concerned that if there's an issue that. The transit district isn't going to respond and take care of it.
Right. Okay. Can I have a motion on this, please?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Galen moves to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Tammy seconded. Steve, do we have a? Letter on this or is it simply a straight approval? There we go.
Mr. Chairman, should we change this approval for today's date? It says August twenty-sixth.
That's the the effective date. Usually the effective date comes like ten days-ish after the approval date, so that's when the approval is effective.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Before we vote, we pulled JJ off, I think, for the last one, so. Let's put JJ back on and Mr. Patch is off for this one. So voting will be JJ and Mr. Williams. Steve, do you want to? It needn't be written now, but to the extent you want. Anything in the file. Regarding an MOU or whatever language you think is appropriate. I I think we could add that to. The approve.
Sure, Michelle and I can work with Yapkin on.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Let's do a roll call.
Michelle, you want to do that?
Sure. Mr. Williams, is he on?
Yeah.
I'm not sure exactly whoever one of them.
Mr. Patch is not voting on this one.
Got it. Ms. Byron? Approved. Mr. Mushak?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Scholman?
Yes.
And Steve Ferguson, yes.
Oh, sorry, your camera's not on. Didn't see ya. Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, let's move on.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Look forward to seeing you, I guess, again.
Thank you.
Next, next item, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-nine CAM. Keith Jin Lee and Linda Ho Lee. Trustees nine Shore Haven Road, construct single family home on vacant lot. And is that you, Attorney Maysland?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
I have a brief PowerPoint that I can run through if you'd like to give me. Control of the screen or let, share or whatever you.
You should be able to share, yep.
Share. Hopefully I clicked the right. Thing here, share, okay. You should see a cover slide here.
We do see it.
Art Softwood, Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission. I represent MGS Shore Haven LLC, and just so that the record is updated. Keith Jin Lee and Linda Ho Lee trustees. Sold the property. To MGS Shore Haven LLC after we filed this application, so MGS is now the owner. Of the property and I've mentioned that to Michelle and she was going to upload the the application or update the. Application file. In that regard. I thought I was going to have Greg Altshuler, who is one of the principals at MGS here, although he's having trouble, but. I think I can get through this by myself. So. Nine Shore Haven Road and Nine Shore Haven Road. Is the old parking lot. For those of you who have been here for. Longer than, say. Twenty-two, twenty-three years. You might remember the old Shorelands, which was the Knights of Columbus facility. Across Shore Haven Road from this parking lot. This is the parking lot for Shorelands. And as you'll see in the survey in a minute, it's bounded. By the public section of Shore Haven Road. In fact, it's the last property on the left as you head up. Away from. Shady Beach. And it's got Half Mile Creek. Behind it or to the north and undeveloped land on either side. It's been vacant since. Shorelands closed. There's some debris there, but for the most part, it's just been. Left alone. And the owners now would like to develop it. Title wetlands run along the northwest boundary. No dock or no waterward structures are proposed. And there's no history of DEP permitting and there is a history, as mentioned in Michelle's. Memo. Of a permit. Or an approval. And a building permit back around two thousand or so, but that never materialized. Whoever it was at the time. Walked away from the project, apparently. And what we're trying to do here is seek approval under the Coastal Management Act and regulations. For a new single family residence. I have up on the slide here. An aerial view. The red outline is the property that we're talking about here, and as you can see. It's basically a vacant. Lot. This body of water that's. Behind it circles around and. It goes out into the sound. Under this bridge that connects the two pieces of Shore Haven Road. If you're familiar with the area, you'll know that somewhere down there is the connection for Sprite Island. The Sprite Island Club. The lot to the. I guess southwest is an open space lot, and I believe this is either an open space parcel or it's just not buildable. Up to the north. The old Knights of Columbus site was divided into two building lots back around two thousand. And you'll see two single family homes. That were built shortly after that. And. On the survey here. You'll see. The boundary of the parcel. There's also a mean high water line that runs in here and the lot area is based on the mean high water elevation line. Title wetlands. It's a little difficult to see. Let me see if I can. Magnify this a bit. The title wetland flags. Start over on the left and they run along. You'll see limit of ragged wetlands. And it kind of runs along. You see the flags here, 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 here. And then when you get down toward the. Right side of the. Of the map, you'll see them kind of bend toward the street. And then they go closer up to the street. And then off. Other right side. The entire site is in a flood zone. The building site is in flood zone AE at elevation twelve. And flood zone VE. Is in the, I guess, the upper right quadrant, as you see this. Map. And that's at elevation fourteen. No construction work is proposed in the VE zone. You'll notice. Sanitary sewer easements along the front boundary. We're working with DPW on these. The reasons these are here. Is because years ago Shore Haven Road was private, and if you remember back in those days. You would enter Shore Haven Road through pillars. That ran as an extension of Cantfield coming from the direction of Shore Haven Yacht Club, Country Club. And the the road would hook to the left. Back around two thousand, this road was straightened out, so now. When you come. Along Cantfield in front of Shady Beach, you come to the stop sign and now it's a straight road and you drive straight into it. Off to the right side. Of this survey, and if you've been out there, you see a couple of pillars. That's the end of the public portion of Shore Haven Road and the beginning of. The. Private section. And I have next a. Slide that shows the proposed. Zoning location survey. Footprint, a driveway out. On this part of the property to the left. And you'll see these sewer easements in here. What we're going to end up doing is working with TPW and and changing these. To do two things. One, we're not quite sure where the sewer main is. The DPW is doing some research to get the plans. And I received a call today from. Mr. Yosak over at DPW, who's got some of that information for me. What we're going to end up doing is making all of this. The city's sewer easement rather than three different. Easements. Right now, the long one serves one of the properties across the street. The one on the left serves the other property across the street, and there's this little rectangle in the middle where the. Where the manhole is, and that. Is the city's. Easement. So this kind of was done. Things are done sometimes not the best way, and this is an opportunity to. Bring that all up to date and clarify it. The other thing, I'll go over to the site plan. Well, let's do the architecturals first. Well, let's do the architecturals first. These are. Perspectives. The top left is from the street looking toward the proposed building, this is kind of an oblique angle, the top right image. Showing where the garage. Is again from this general direction of the street. The lower left is the perspective from the right side of the property looking toward the building, and you'll see a deck that wraps around toward the back. Lower right is. Again, from the general direction from the street, but looking. Back toward the property to the left, you see the garage over here on the left. That deck begins over here. And obviously sidewalk here and some plantings, and that's basically it. These other perspectives are similar, the top right one is from the rear. Of the property looking toward the back of the house, and then these two on the bottom are. Angled perspectives from. The rear of the property, they're all computer generated. So they're not really fancy artwork like you see sometimes. Elevations are here. The height. Of the building is compliant with. The. Zoning regulations for height, it's a two-story building. Flat roof with, I think the parapet is roughly. Two or two to three feet, which is three feet's the maximum. But it's well within the height limit in terms of feet. And these are the, just the two side elevations.
And, and what's, what's the starting elevation of the house?
Oh, the, well. I think I just enlarged this here for you. The average grades eight point nine two. Elevation eight point nine two, and the building height. Is measured. From that elevation going up. If you go up to the parapet. You're going to be at. And I'm looking at the full-size sheet because it's easier than looking down the computer. The top of the highest parapet is twenty-nine point zero eight, and that's above the eight point nine two. And the flat roof is at twenty-five point nine one.
What it, what is the elevation of the first floor?
First. Get that? First floor, the top of the floor?
No, the, the floor itself.
Well, there's two of them, the top of, the top is fourteen and the bottom is thirteen.
Okay.
Bottom is, bottom is a foot higher than the base flood elevation. I, I think that's your question.
Exactly.
Okay. Let me see if I can. Okay. The house will be built on. Piers or pilings. And this sheet, let me see if I can. Blow this up somewhat, take a little section here. These outer pilings support the deck. Are on the right side and, and right rear, and the other pilings. Support the main house. The developer is. Still considering whether to use breakaway walls with flood vents or just take the walls out completely and just have this. On open piles. And obviously landscape around them, so you're not looking at a, at an empty space underneath the building. But there's no crawl space or any room. Under the structure itself. Other than these piles. If you go over to the right, you'll see. Solid walls around the garage. And these have flood vents alongside the garage door. And they're alongside. Are in the sides all the way around. And those, those are obviously going to be definitely permanent. Walls that go down to the ground. Rather than the breakaway walls. Floor plan, two-car garage on the first floor. The rest of the first floor is going to be up at the elevations, we discussed thirteen to the bottom, fourteen to the top of the floor. And. Second story, there's no second story over the garage. But. Second story is here, typical, typical house bedrooms, et cetera. These are cross-sections if you're interested. They're in the plans as well. And then we have a landscape plan for you. Matt Pop prepared this, and he also prepared a. CAM report. The. Developed area is. In green, is vegetation, kind of surrounds it on either side. The title, well, flood zone line you'll see here. No activities. Other than silt fencing and cleanup. In the V-zone, and the only thing that's going to happen in the tidal wetland area is cleanup. And maybe some plantings. To. Dress it up a bit. The front. And the two sides are going to be. Little lawn area in the back, but there's not much room because of the proximity of the tidal wetland area. Driveway in the front, walkways. Around and. And that's it, we did. Check with DEP, this property is within an area that's identified on the natural. Diversity database that DEP ma, DEEP maintains. And it's an indication that there's some. Species of special interest in or near this site. Matt. Filed a request with DEP to see what's there and to get a response from them. On whether this project would have any impact. And as it turns out, I don't know if you've ever heard of this, but there is such a thing as a northern diamondback terrapin. It's a little turtle that lives in brackish water. DEP says this site will not have any impact on. The northern diamondback terrapin or its habitat. And none were observed on the site. The rest is a standard. CAM slash environmental report. The. And so that, that's basically, oh, you know what, I forgot something. I'll go back. To the site plan. Drainage. All of the drainage will be directed. Into. Coltech system. Oops, that will. Handle a one-hundred-year storm. Which is, I think, a pretty significant. Improvement over the existing conditions because the debris gets cleaned up. You'll get some stormwater management and certainly some rent, a lot of renovation. During storm events. And that covers us on the drainage. This site will have a direct connection to public water. Which is right here, the approximate location or the actual location of the. Water main is not really clear yet, because we're waiting on, on those plans. The sewer connection as shown on. This site plan that was prepared by. Wayne D'Avanzo. Shows a connection to the manhole, this is going to be changed. Because the DPW doesn't, or WPCA. Doesn't allow that anymore, it's going to be connected directly to a main, probably by a T somewhere around this area. But we need the technical information from. DPW before we can lay that out on a plan, so those are the two major site plan issues. If I can. Go to. The referrals and sign-offs, I talked about the DEEP NDDB review. Coastal site plan review, we've. I've mentioned a few things here, there's no work proposed in tidal wetlands or waterward of the coastal jurisdiction line. So DEP is not really involved here, there is a general permit for coastal maintenance. And that's not really implemented here or triggered here, other than perhaps cleanup. Of some of the debris and old chunks of pavement from the old parking lot, oops. And we had initially planned rocks at ten-foot intervals. Around the developed site. As a way to. Provide some demarcation. From the tidal wetland and the area behind the house, but DEP said. We don't like those, so we took them out. Alexis Caracetti over at Conservation says, we don't like those, so we took them out. The Harbor Management Commission.
Is there a replacement? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Is there some sort of replacement, yeah, where the boulders?
Well, you mean like a fence or something like that? No. If you, if you'd like us to consider something, we're happy to. Maybe plant.
Just a question.
Yep, okay. The Harbor Management Commission signed off on this, it was unfortunately one of the last official acts of, of Chairman John Romano, who I've known for. Many, many years, he has since left us. He spent many, many years serving the city in one capacity or another. Conservation Commission signed off, there's a memo in the file. And DPW, as I mentioned, we're working with them regarding the sewer main and the new sewer easement. There's a. Several comments seeking. A new sidewalk. And we're, we're going to do that, and because of the way the boundary is and where the. Existing sidewalk is on the adjacent property to the southwest. We have to make that line up, and one of the. Issues that goes along with that is a, a public right-of-way for the sidewalk itself, and we'll work through all of that with DPW. And probably Michelle or whoever in the zoning staff will be. Working with this on that. Just today, late this afternoon, we received transportation, mobility and parking comments. They're similar to the other comments we received from DPW, including and specifically the sidewalk. They're also looking for sightlines. Excuse me, which would be no problem at all because there are no trees here to speak of, and the landscaping is all. Going to be brand-new, so we'll work, work pretty easily on those issues. Third taxing district, we did get. An email confirming the availability of power. There are light bulbs in the street. And the first taxing district is the water company, I did speak with them, I received a verbal confirmation of availability of water service. I've been asking for something in writing, haven't received anything. But I don't really think that's going to be a problem. Because there's already water in this street, so coastal considerations, just to wrap up. All of the development activities are landward of mean-high water, landward of the tidal wetland boundaries, and also landward of the coastal jurisdiction line, which is a few feet. On the landward side of the mean-high water line. The engineered stormwater management system. Is a new feature on this site, which will be very beneficial in terms of stormwater management and water quality. Minimal regrading, if you've been out to the site, you'll, you'll know that this is pretty flat. If any, is just going to be finished grade. Debris will be removed, no increase in the base flood elevation, we're virtually on open water of the sound here. And we comply with the flood regulations. Public water and public sanitary sewer, which are, especially the sewer is. Preferable over septic system. And S and E controls are standard and site stabilization will obviously reduce. Risk of saltation, but these, those are all standard items, and that's what I have for you. Questions? Michelle, did I cover everything?
Yeah, and some.
Okay, all right. And so that's it, I don't know how to turn my screen off here. Maybe you can.
We'll stop it.
Does this work? Oh, here we go. Oh, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution? On this?
We don't have questions or comments firstly?
I'm sorry, Tammy, I didn't think there were any, please go ahead.
Thank you, hi, Mr. Maslin.
Hi, Tammy, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, I hope the same. Couple of questions, so can you explain who MGS is?
MGS is a limited liability company, it's people who are engaged in property development.
Okay, so it's not, the Lees are actually not building this house?
Oh, no, no, they sold the property to the developer, they're out of the picture now.
Okay, so this is a spec house?
I believe it is, yes.
Okay, that's why I'm asking, because the developer isn't planning on living in this house.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you, and then. Just what, do you know what percent of the lot coverage of the building is that's, you know, outside of the tidal wetland line? Is it twenty-five percent or thirty-five percent?
Well, building coverage itself. Is twelve point four. I don't have an exact figure, if you deduct out the area of tidal wetland.
Okay, so the twelve point four is the total, one point, whatever acres it is.
Sorry? I think.
The twelve percent then is of the total acreage, the one point two acres, which some of it is in the water.
No. The, no, the mean-high water line is the boundary.
Okay.
So although the, the historic boundaries might extend out into the water where the water is today. You can't own the land. C-word of mean-high water, so the, the surveyor calculates lot area based on where the mean-high water line is.
Okay. Yeah, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Wells had her hand up.
Yeah. I have one question that may not be relevant really to zoning issues. But when I was Real Estate Council American Standard, I remember warehouse roofs collapsing, flat roofs of the snow. How are you going to deal with the snow on this flat roof?
There are flat roofs all over, and they're designed to withstand. That kind of weight. The thing that. I remember is the old Hartford Civic Center. With snow on it, but we're way, that's, that was thirty-five, forty years ago, we're way beyond that now. And the design, you know, it's, it's going to be structurally. Structural engineer is going to have to deal with. All of the structural issues, starting with. The pilings, you know, the geo-testing for the condition of the earth. How far down you have to go with the pilings, and at every aspect of the construction. Of the building has to meet structural requirements. So, and, and the building department will, will take a look at it, obviously. To make sure it's built according to code.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, then let's move on to the draft resolution. Motion to approve a draft resolution. Okay. Hector. Hector moves, is there a second? And Richard seconds. Michelle, can you put that up for us? On this one. JJ and Mr. Patches will be on, and Mr. Williams will not vote.
Can I just touch on one thing, if it's not too late?
Oh, go ahead.
Initially, the memo mentioned in paragraph twelve, a forty-eight-inch paved sidewalk. That meets the city code and. Late this afternoon, we received the memo from. Transportation, Mobility and Parking. Mentioning a five-foot sidewalk, there is an existing sidewalk. To the. Southwest of this property, and what I would ask is that this width issue be flexible so that it matches up with. The width of the sidewalk. That it's going to connect to. It, it, that sidewalk continues on to the intersection, I, I don't have the exact measurement of it, but. What would not make sense is a four-foot sidewalk that meets up with a five-foot sidewalk and vice versa. So if we could have a little flexibility to make sure it matches up. So if we could have a little flexibility to make sure it matches up in the width. I think it might be a better, better way to write the condition.
Steve?
Right-of-way, the right-of-way is not an issue. You know, we, we know that, that's part of this.
Steve, is this five feet because that's what TNP wants?
I believe so. I think maybe the wording could be to city standards because if the, if the city's moving to five foot. Then I think that's what, what would they be called for, but I, I understand Mr. Maslin's point.
Okay, you, you want, do you want to change, uh, change the language appropriately? Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to say that's reasonable request and ADA is three feet. So and I'm aware of four foot sidewalks going in recently. I, I think we should give the applicant flexibility on this. And I, and I just want to say Mr. Maslin, this presentation was pretty good, thorough and for, for this kind of application. I don't think we've gotten one like this before. So thanks.
I tried. I hope I missed anything. I, I would just mention on the sidewalk, this is going to be the end of the sidewalk. This lot, because when you head farther up Shore Haven Road, it's, it becomes a private section right at the end of this particular site. So there's really no no need to look into the terms of extending it further.
Yeah, and five, five is our urban core with, although, you know, that I'm aware of four and fives recently put in, but I think it, it's called a context sensitive design to be technical about it, but you know, you're it is matching the context. It doesn't have to be the standard of that is applied everywhere, but four feet would be sufficient for ADA for sure. So what is?
I don't, I don't think frankly that we have the, the authority. If DPW says a five foot sidewalk is required to say no, it can be four feet. I, I think the language that Steve has here that a sidewalk that meets the city code should be adequate.
Well, that would include four. Yeah, I mean, there's a.
Oh, after, of, of course.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
All right, Steve, you want to put a period after code? Or is that and for the following requirement number 13?
Yes, Michelle's actually the one doing the.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Yeah, it, it goes on to the next one.
Okay, my apologies. That's fine. We have a motion to approve. Let's, let's go to a roll call vote on this. For this one, JJ. I believe, wait, I already said that, how we were handling this one, didn't I? I apologize. Okay, let's do a roll call.
You see for me?
Go ahead, Michelle.
Alrighty, Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Owina?
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes.
Ms. Wells? I think that was yes. Mr. Williams? Oh, sorry, Mr. Patches? Ms. Byron?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
Ms. Langgalls?
Yes.
And Mr. Schuman?
Yes. Thank you all for your attention and your time to see. Thank you for the approval.
All right, let's move on. A question for the staff. Why is this next item before us? When the staff is telling us that it doesn't meet requirements?
So the application was submitted. I believe Michelle can confirm. I believe we had sent out memo to the applicant, had not gotten any response back yet. I, I mean, I think it would be a good time to address the matter head on and then my, my, my two senses, I don't see how they're not creating a three lot subdivision, in which case two of the lots wouldn't have any width on the street. So I'm not sure how this would actually comply.
Okay, all right, let's move on it. 2022-35 subdivision CAM 22 Lounes Avenue LLC. Two lot subdivision with proposed private road. This is a preliminary review. Mr. Russo, you rep, either are the applicant or representing the applicant?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, good to be before you tonight. Here on behalf of the applicant, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizzo LLC. Offices at 10 Sasko Hill Road in Fairfield. So this site, and if I, if I have the ability to share. I will pull up the plans. This site is located in the residency zone and it is located at the end of Lounes Avenue, at the very end of Lounes Avenue before it, it stops at the, at the water. The site is an extremely large site for the zone. It is 21,934 square feet. So it's more than four times the minimum required lot area for the zone. So when we initially looked at subdividing the site, talked with the city and, you know, talks about the possibility of, of just splitting a lot along Lounes Avenue, but also the possibility of doing a private road to obtain the necessary lot width along a private road. And under your subdivision regulations, section 3.04, it permits subdivisions along private roads that they would gain their lot with along a private road. And initially staff, we, we, we talked to them and said, you know, I, I think we could fit a private road here that fits the city standards. And without anything drawn out, you know, it's tough to judge whether or not that, that is the case. And so our engineers worked with the senior civil engineer for the city, Paul Sotnick. And we also worked with the fire marshal, Broderick Sawyer, to see if there was a private road that we could place on this site and still fulfill the requirements of the regulations with regard to lot area and, and lot width. And we were able to obtain that design. So what we're presenting before you tonight is a two lot subdivision that is along a private road that conforms to city standards. And so, and, and Chairman, I, I know it's pre-app review, so I don't know how much you want me to get into the application, but I can, I, I could kind of run through our plans here and, and, and show you exactly what we're proposing. If you think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I, I'd, I'd ask that, that's fine, but keep it brief.
Sure. So as you can see here, Lounes Avenue ends right here. Before it goes into the water, right now there is a, there's a single family residences on the site. It's non-conforming in a number of ways as to street setback, height. It also has a non-conforming accessory structure. So the proposal is to demolish these, these structures. And then this is the site plan with the proposed private road. The private road would come off of Lounes Avenue and access both these sites. Again, because the site is so large, each of the lots well exceeds the requirements under the regulations. So this lot A here is, is over 7,500 feet and this lot B is 7,400 square feet. So the minimum lot area in this zone is 5,000. So it's well in excess of that. In addition, the site has the necessary lot width along the proposed private road, 63 feet for this upper lot and a little over 63 feet on this lower lot. This design is the one that we reviewed with both the fire marshal and the civil engineer to make sure it complied. So particularly of, of, of fire truck could navigate it. So they provided us with, there's actually a diagram, an alley diagram. That's the name of this type of road. And we applied it. That's why you see here, this, on this upper lot, it, it's more you know, more of a right angle, but here, this, these ra- radiuses over here, radi over here are the ones that provide the necessary turning radius for for emergency vehicles. So we were able to design this private road. I know the city, you know, there's a number of lots, obviously on private roads. There's a number of subdivisions that have come before this commission. I know Katie Lane, Yarmouth, Rocky Point Road, Nathan Hale, subdivisions along private roads. And essentially that's what we have here is we're, we're, we're proposing a two lot subdivision on a private road that conforms to city standards. On top of that, just to briefly not, again, not get in too much into the application, but we also were able to, we reviewed with the, the engineer for the city to design the drainage for the site for both the road and potential houses. This application is just for the subdivision in the private road and not for any dwellings. We would have to come back to you. But just to show that we could provide. We show, provide for dwellings. We showed two mock houses, I guess you'd say. And in the drainage for both the road and the houses. So we believe it's fully consistent with your regulations and your subdivision regulations again. Section 3.04 says that that subdivisions are permitted on private roads. And section 3.24 says that that the requirement is that the private road shall conform to city standards. And that's what we believe we've done here. So, and you know, hence we're asking to move forward for a public hearing to present this application as a two lot subdivision.
Staff, any comments on this?
Sure.
No.
Michelle?
Go ahead, Michelle.
I was just going to add that, um, from, so from our point of view, when we first received it, going through the subdivision regulations, there was some meets and bounds that didn't, that the city standards for rows weren't, weren't met. And other additional standards within our regulations that aren't in the, the, the DPW standards that are, are in the subdivision regulations that are that need to be met. That I think aren't here. So, and then in, in addition to this additional lot, we saw it as two rear lots with a third, third lot. So that's just kind of our point of view. But if Steve has anything to add in regards to next steps.
Now let, maybe, maybe we can, you know, Michelle and I can sit down with DPW and look at it from what, what they saw and then confirm. I, I believe also Kim, it was referred out to Connecticut Deep, and I don't believe they looked at it very favorably as well.
All right, so we're not in a position then to schedule a public hearing. We will schedule a public hearing if and when the staff is satisfied that the, this, this meets the city's requirements.
Mr. Chairman, might I ask a question, please?
Sure, go ahead, Richard.
Attorney Russo, I wonder if you would use your cursor and just show me what the lines of title are on these two lots specifically, not the water side, the other side, the roadside.
Sure, let me go to the plan that doesn't have all the, the lines here. Yeah, this would be the best one, right? So the, th- this would be the private road and, and much like you know, any, you know, any other private roads. I mean, they're, they're, the private roads generally are considered, you know, a separate lot in the subdivision. They are the access to the building lots. And so on this one, you know, let me see, actually, I think I could use the there's the feature here to, I don't see it, to annotate, but there's a line right here that's 63 feet. That's basically the entrance into this lot A, and then it runs down, kind of splitting in the middle of this, of, between these two lots. And then the same thing over here is is another line that's to the front property line against the private road. And, and just in, in sort of a response to the staff and, and and I think the comments from the attorney is, you know, when we first started off in the application, we approached the engineer and the fire marshal and asked them what they felt would be an appropriate design for a road like this. Then there were other options. So I, I know Michelle discussed cul-de-sac streets and a cul-de-sac street, I think is a possibility here, but when we met with, with the engineer and the fire marshal, they seem to think that this would be a design, one that matched their standards. But that would work for, for what we were proposing. So that's why we designed it this way, instead of something like a, like a cul-de-sac.
What I'm asking you is about the line of title and I guess what would be the front of the lot. Is it that, is it that straight? In other words, who, who owns the, the?
The private road? Yeah, so the private road, and, and I've done this on a number of subdivisions, the private road will go into a private road association.
No, I'm not talking about the road. I'm talking about the, the part that's not crosshatched. The, I wish I could point at it, but.
This is, this is all, this, this area, right? Between the two, yeah. That, that would just be part of the private road association as well. That would be, that, that would be who would own this, this whole area right here.
Okay.
And they would, you know, and that private road association would be responsible for all the landscaping and trees in addition to, you know, all the paving and curbing and drainage that's associated with.
So that area is not calculated into your lot size, nor is it calculated into your frontage?
No. No, that, that's, the, 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 these rectangle boxes up here are the only ones that are calculated into the, the lot area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes, Mike here, just for clarity, the proposed alley here or any other private road, do they get a tax bill? And it's taxes are paid on that property tax?
As they're private, yes, it, it should, it should bear some taxes, I would think. I'm not 100% on the, sure on the answer to that question, but I know on other private road subdivisions I had that that, it, it gets its own tax bill.
So it becomes a lot?
Well, it's not a, a building lot per se. It's, it's it's a parcel of land that is privately owned. So it, it it, it's taxed and, and you know, they would have to, the, the private road association would have to pay the taxes on that lot. Or that, that parcel of land, I should say.
Just trying to get some clarity here on what's going on. Thanks.
Um, Mr. Steve?
Go ahead, Tammy.
I'm sorry. Mr. Russo, you have the, the circle and then you showed us the sketch with the square where the house would be. And it looks like on this survey, it's 15 feet to the stone wall in the back, which is the water side. Is that really the rear setback? And I'm just, this is more for the staff, but wouldn't it be better to move those houses back away from the water's edge? Because you're right on the edge of the FEMA zone there and get them out of the flood zone?
Yes, and, and, and again, we're, we're not here for the for the approval of the houses. We'll come back because it's in a coastal area. We'll have to come back to you for the approval for each of the specific homes. But the, the rear setback is 15 feet and And uh, in our engineer did, you know, just placed essentially a box. To show. Uh, to show that house could go in this area and how it would, how the drainage would work for it. But a design, I would think, I agree with you. I think a design, there's some room up here. Uh, that a building could be shifted farther away from the water to create more of a yard. Uh, same thing here on this lower lot, lot B. You could see there's there's a good deal of area up here where this house could be shifted back. So I think when we come for the, you know, if if we have the opportunity, uh, when we would come for the the proposed dwellings. They would shift away from uh from the harbor. Just so that you would have more of a kind of backyard in front of the uh, you know, in front of the water. Uh, this was just purely to show the ability to put drainage facilities there.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Um, I I think Darius had a question.
I just would suggest the uh commission to review, for those who have not reviewed um, Ms. Ballint. Uh, from deep, her her comments regarding uh this proposal.
Thank you, Darius.
Chair, we do, I I have not seen those comments, but we we do have a um, Bill Kenny uh office did prepare a camera port. So I'll, we'll, we'll take a look at her comments and um uh or their comments and uh and make sure. You know, if we, when we do have a public hearing, um, that uh that Mister Kenny's there to respond to them.
Tammy?
Yeah, that kind of leads me back to a question for the staff. How can? We or the city approve three lots if if two of them really don't have any access? Like, it's not a rear lot, it's one lot that you, it isn't really a building lot if it's just a private road, right? So how can you make it three lots?
I would think the the. The private road needs to be completely fully functioning, except in city road to have legal frontages. For those two lots, and I don't think we've gotten there.
I mean, the issue with that is every every. House, every parcel of land that's on a private street would be considered to be non-conforming then. Because the private road would be considered to be a separate lot. And therefore. I I'm I I, the interpretation is almost that the. Uh, tho- those lots, because they, any of those lots wouldn't be connected to a public street, they would just be connected to the private road.
Well, this 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 debate needs to go offline.
Under understood, Chair. I I understood, I understood.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item uh is discussion and adoption of the commission's bylaws. And uh, I'm gonna turn that over to Galen, who chaired the committee that um rewrote the bylaws. At the moment, you're mute. There you go.
Okay, I see. Uh, well, I met with uh. Darius and Mike Musick, and we went over the current bylaws and. Discussed a draft for proposed bylaws, which I then put together. Uh, for the group, then I brought it before Steve Kleppen and uh. Brian Baker, and they both looked at it and made uh suggestions for revision. So I think we're ready to approve it. They were attached to the materials that went out tonight. Does anybody have any questions that I can answer?
I do. First of all, thank you, very well done. Uh, but paragraph six, um, I I had a lot of trouble understanding.
Let's uh, let's see if we can pull that up, Steve. Uh, so that everyone can see what Richard's talking about.
Just give me a minute because I, that was one thing I forgot to get organized before the meeting, so.
Galen, while Steve's doing that, I, oh, there you are. I apologize. Was trying to cut and paste and send you that question this afternoon, but I couldn't get it to work for some reason.
I think you have to do it in edit mode. That's why.
Oh, I I know that, but it just wouldn't work.
Okay, sorry.
Do you remember the article in reference?
Six.
Okay, I got it. You said number article six?
Yes.
Section six?
Did I skip past it?
Yes, you did. You're up to eight and nine. I'm sorry, it's.
Yeah, here we are.
Can you make that just a little bit bigger? Thank you.
Okay, there's the next paragraph to it.
I was gonna say, that seems pretty self-explanatory.
Why am I not going down any further? Yeah, that's it.
Then I was wrong on, ha- had to do with um how many members were required to make a quorum, and there was a very long sentence. And then it was followed by, um, if there was only five people there.
I think it's section six.
Yes, it's a section six.
This one here?
No.
Yes.
I'm I'm sorry, I wish I I I wish that I had cut out what I was looking at.
This is, this is the.
And you have to have a majority of those present and voting if a quorum exists.
Right, and then what does it mean when it says a smaller number may adjourn from time to time until a quorum is in attendance?
Well, that means if like, let's say, three commissioners didn't uh atta- attended and there was no quorum. We would adjourn the meeting until a quorum is present. You can't have a meeting without a quorum.
Oh, you mean adjourn the meeting for like five minutes and see if anybody else comes?
That or till the next meeting, or said, you know, I mean, if if they're.
All right, I just, I just didn't understand that.
Because if there's less than a. Can't can conduct business, so you have.
Well, I, that part I get, but I didn't know what you meant, may adjourn from time to time until a quorum is in attendance. I mean, if there was no quorum, there would be no meeting, so the quorum would have to wait till next time, maybe, right? Uh, it it's okay, I just didn't get, that's all.
Okay, I, because we could.
That, don't ha- don't worry about me. If everybody else gets it, it's fine.
We put it as like those in attendance, uh, members in attendance may adjourn until a quorum. You know, um, for. Is there another way we would want to work?
Is adjourn the right word? Maybe like, what about convene?
So it says a smaller number may adjourn from time to time until a quorum, uh, it.
Yeah, it just means that we adjourn it. I.
So that means that less than a quorum has the authority to adjourn.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that that works for me, I guess.
Yeah, it's it's sort of made sense to me, but if anybody.
I I just, I'm I'm not, uh, you know, that well-versed in Roberts rules and all that stuff. So maybe this is like standard operating language, so it it's fine. I get it now.
Well. Expert Roberts rules either.
Nonetheless, if there's no issue, let's drop it. Is there anything else?
Oh, well, I I would just say that language. From time to time just sounds wishy-washy and bylaws, I think is really what uh Richard is, right? I mean it.
Yeah, this, I would say simplify.
A smaller number may. Uh, i- i- a smaller number may adjourn as necessary until a quorum is in attendance.
Yeah, that's.
Or shall adjourn.
Shall adjourn.
Right, that's a good idea.
Shall adjourn as necessary.
Until a quorum is isn't.
By the time, that just sounds, yeah, it just sounds like, uh, oh, you know. Let's just do it now. Let's do it now. Let's do it some other time, whatever.
Okay, that's that's a good suggestion, and that does make it clearer.
Steve. Uh, can you make that change? Uh, or do you need to uh make it later?
Um, I will, um.
I can re- I can repeat that if you want. A smaller number may adjourn as necessary.
Do we have a recorded?
Or just may adjourn until a quorum is present.
Right, until a quorum, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need as necessary, just say may adjourn until a quorum is present.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's even simpler.
All right, are there other questions about uh the bylaws? All right, if there are none.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I I did not receive my packet, so I didn't get a chance to review it.
Oh.
Then you could abstain from the approval.
Well, is there, is there anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to review it?
It was sent out by Brian in the email, you know, minutes after the rest of it.
That doesn't matter. If if there are other people who haven't had a chance to review it for whatever reason. Um, we can, we can put off the vote until our meeting next week.
I'll I'll abstain, you guys can vote.
Well, if it's just one person, I think that's okay. Um. All right, um, then let's have a motion uh to uh approve as amended. Richard uh moves and Hector seconds and Tammy seconds. All those in favor, we can do it with a show of hands.
Steve's raising his hand, Ferguson.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Welcome.
Uh, any, any nays, any abstentions? Are approved with one abstention. Thank you very much, Galen, and uh to the members of uh of your committee for this work.
Thank you.
Approval of uh minutes uh for the uh August four meeting for um. Steve, I think uh you weren't at the meeting, but I.
I abstained from that one, yes.
Yeah, but I think everyone else was. Um, motion.
I abstained as well. I was not there.
Oh, my apologies, Nick. All right, someone want to make a motion on uh approval of minutes?
Make the motion, Lou.
Tammy moves, there are second. Richard seconds, again by show of hands, all those in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Um, looks like uh six. Was that six or seven, Steve?
I had six.
All right.
I abstained, correct?
Right, we had uh six, six, uh, yes, and uh three abstentions. Okay, uh, comments of the director, Steve?
Um, only thing I was going to look for a little feedback on was um, this came up at a prior meeting. The industrial zones amendments went through council last week, so the public hearing is scheduled for September eighth. Um, we talked about notice and publication, um, and I think JJ had some. Thoughts maybe on some other things we could try. I, we're sending out letters to um a- any property owner who's got. Piece of property that's going to be affected, so we are doing that. Um, those will probably go out Friday, hopefully if I can get all the envelope stuff. By then, uh, but if, you know, in addition to publishing legal notices, if there's any other things you thought would be helpful, um. I'm all ears on that front.
Steve, were there comments of from the members of the council?
Yeah, that, so that there was a big kind of discussion, because obviously with the purchase of. The property for the new school, that kind of threw a little bit of a monkey wrench into the plans, because that's. Industrial zone property and right across the street from some of the heavier industrial uses on Meadow Street. So their recommendation, which um, you know, we were fine with, was to downzone. Those properties along Meadow from the I one to the I two. Um, so we made those changes on the map, um, and and we'll have that up there going forward. One thing we're doing with the notice, which um Amelia and Brian are helping me with is. So as part of the notice, we're gonna send out something, so basically there's gonna be a link to go to the webpage. Webpage will have a map, and you'll be able to put in your property address, and it'll pop up there, and it'll show you what the current zoning is and what the proposed zoning is. Hopefully, that'll answer a lot of questions before they get to emailing me, so that's one thing we're gonna try to make it nice and, nice and clear going forward.
Steve, if you can send around a reminder link for the different community groups that have a lot of email lists. Maybe a couple of times might get lost in the Labor Day, but I think it would be good to send it around again to the public beside those letters that you're doing as well.
Sure, that's easy.
What about sending out the notice to realtors?
Um, we could, there's not a lot of commercial brokers, but we could seek that out.
Steve, when's the public hearing again?
I think September eighth.
Oh, um, I will not be here.
I won't be here either. I'll actually be where Lou is right now. I'm gonna be on Martha's Vineyard that week.
Uh, obviously, you can do what I'm doing.
Obviously, we didn't have to put him on blast, like.
September eighth?
I I believe that's your.
I'm gonna be down at the uh, the Fish Shack down in Manamsha, probably, but I think I could manage.
I might not be present for September eighth. It's my birthday, it's my birthday.
Happy early birthday.
I'll be twenty-one years old.
Are you fully recovered, Steve?
Yes, I am. I am fully recovered.
Good. All right, we believe.
Voting that evening, right? That's just a public hearing. It's not a a voting meeting.
It's, that's it, your call. You can vote that night.
Oh, okay, thank you. Well, it's up to Lou, not me.
Is is it uh, is it out of the question to move that?
Well, the problem you're running into is that the moratorium. Right, expires probably a week later, so that's that's kind of reason to kind of push it along. It it got held up in council. Longer than it should have, I think, so that I I would have thought we would have had the public hearing already.
Can we have it when I get back?
Well, that's, I mean, it's it's your call, I mean.
We can extend the moratorium, could we not?
No, that requires a public hearing also.
Yeah.
I'll be free the.
I am as well.
Me too.
I just encourage you, if you're out of town and if it's at all possible to uh do it remotely from wherever you are, try and do it.
I will be in Croatia.
That won't work.
That sounds nice, though. That sounds like.
Yeah, it's gonna be a little hard to do that.
Okay, anything else, Steve? No, I'm sorry, Darius, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was just seeing if uh Steve has heard anything back from the rewrite consultants.
Yes, we're actually working through the last bits of it. Um, edits on my end, back to them. I don't have an exact date, but it's getting closer. I don't have an exact date, but it's getting closer.
All right. Go ahead.
Uh, I guess we're in comments of commissioners.
No, I I've wanted to see if Steve had anything else before.
Oh, got it, sorry.
No, nope, nothing.
You're done? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Oh, well, I want to just say, it's not Neil Diamond tonight that got rained out. Neil Diamond is next Wednesday when we have a meeting, so not being able to go next week. Tonight, it was a uh, somebody in a Pazzani folk or something, or jazz soul something and uh, but the storm was coming through that I saw and I bet it got canceled. Anyway, it doesn't matter, uh, since none of us could be there, but the Wednesday night concert series at the Kaff Pastor has just been awesome, anyway. So we will miss it next Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Yeah, I, uh, since Mike brought it up, I'll just, you know, remind you, we do have a meeting uh, August twenty-fourth uh, next week.
And I'll also plug, sorry, I will plug Jim Clark, local famous jazz saxophone player and neighbor here in Golden Hill. He's gonna be performing this Saturday in Ryan Park uh, with a uh, jazz series that's sponsored by local organizations, taxing district, et cetera. So uh, that'll be at seven thirty this Saturday in the newly designed Ryan Park, which is right in the middle of the new Soundview Landing and all the stuff that's all different down there from where the Washington Village used to be.
It's all beautiful.
Yeah, it was pretty awesome a couple of weeks ago, uh, uh, the, the first one, and then I heard the last one, uh, last Saturday, it was great. Anyway, it's this Saturday night at seven thirty. Just putting a plug in there to uh, get the word out.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Richard, there's so many of you, I couldn't count. Richard, Richard moved and Che Che seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, take care, see you all next week.
Thank you for taking your vacation night and doing this.
Um, yeah, thank you, Lou.